Closure of any interest in the general nature thereof, counsel? Seeing none. Approval of minutes from January 14th. Moved by Counselor V., seconded by Counselor Hamner. All in favor? That's carried. And there's no delegations, there's no presentations, there's no consent motion. We're on to staff reports. So the first staff report is the 2018 Drinking Water Annual Report and Sum Report, IPBW 2019-11 with Natasha Glaser. Is there a presentation on this or no? So moved by Counselor V., seconded by Counselor Henry. Any comments or questions, counsel? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Thank you for the report. It's an important piece of work that we do here every year to know that our water distribution system is safe. The next staff report is comments on the proposed amendment to the growth for the Greater Horseshoe, Golden Horseshoe, 2017, prepared by Rick Martins. Is there a presentation on this one? No? Okay. So is there any questions of staff on this item, counsel? Yep, Counselor Bonagor.
Through you, Chair Freeman. Hi, I just had a couple of questions about the recommendations that we're making. Under the general themes, where it says "The change to sufficient housing supply that reflects market demand," does that change affect our ability to implement things like inclusionary zoning or to encourage, like, or require, a variety of housing options?
Through you, Counselor Freeman. No, that's part of the visioning in the background area, so it's really just setting the theme for the growth plan, so it doesn't get into the details that would be implemented.
And the other thing is with the density targets with that section, given that we have the countryside line, to me, it makes sense that we encourage smart use of land right across the city, not just in strategic growth areas. So I'm wondering if the city, I would like to see the city support the 60 residents or jobs per hectare, as it, you know, that encourages more efficient use of land and infrastructure. So I'm wondering if we could recommend that market demands be removed as one of the reasons to pursue or allow lower density? Is that like, just some feedback that we could give?
I'm sorry, what was, is the question, what the density number should be?
So, I mean, from my reading of it, it looks like you could use market demands as a reason to request below the 60 jobs or residents per hectare. And I would like to have that not be one of the options, because market demands could be used to apply for very low density, and that's not in keeping with our goals as a city. So I'm wondering, like, where that fits, like, just as market demands as one of the reasons to go below the 60 density.
So I do see Commissioner Rapp's hands up if you wanted to defer that question by all means, Mr. Martins.
Thank you, through Chair Freeman to Counselor Bonagor. If counsel wishes to remove that one component of the, at least, or identify it in counsel recommendations to remove that, if counsel wishes that, basically, you can simply state that, and we can work with the Clerks Department on how the notice does go down to the province without adjusting the report. So in the resolution that goes down to the province, we can work with the clerk to accommodate that if counsel wishes to remove that component, if you will.
So, well, you'd have to put a motion on the table to bring forth the comment, and then counsel would have to then consider that motion.
So I'd like to bring that motion to discuss removing market demands as one of the reasons to allow below the recommended density.
And is there a seconder for that? Okay, Counselor Bodley. So one of the things that maybe might be helpful in this case is to turn to Commissioner Rapp to say, is there another tool in the city that we might have, other than putting that with this document, to give consideration to Counselor Bonagor's intent?
Again, through Chair Freeman, to all of counsel, that one of the ways we could accommodate that would be through our next amendment to our official plan, or through the various district plan studies that we have coming forward. One would be ultimately in Erbsville, but as some of these newer areas are starting to develop and going through the planning processes, some of which are identified in the capital budget, we can insert those goals and objectives in the district plan as well, and that would be within counsel's control.
Counselor Henry.
I think it would be useful to be clear about a couple of things on this. One, it's the province's growth plan, not the city's growth plan, and they will make the changes that they wish to. It sounds like Counselor Bonagor is getting at the ability for municipalities to request a lower density target anywhere in the province. The existing growth plan permits certain municipalities in the inner ring to do so, and the province is recommending changing, that that could be anywhere in the growth plan area, could recommend it for a variety of reasons. The way I would see this best being reflected at the city is not about commenting to the province, it would be simply to assert that we are not seeking a lower target in terms of persons and jobs per hectare overall, either at the city or at the region. I'm not aware of us ever seeking that. In fact, we've been going the opposite direction, so we could tell the province, we're not going to seek a target, but, and we could tell them that it's a bad idea to allow increased flexibility across the board, but I don't think we have to go as far as trying to update our own official plan state, we're just not going to use it if they do it. That's where I'd come from on some of this. This is something they're going to do. This isn't like Schedule 10, I mean, it's, they're going to do this. The area I'd want to be focused on is the staff comment that being able to expand the boundary by up to 40 hectares without any cap on the number of, like, doing it at all, period, in advance of municipal comprehensive review, but doing it any number of times that you want ahead of an MCR is a significant undermining, and if I were to beef this up in any way, I'd focus on that as the most significant undermining factor in the growth plan, and otherwise assert that we have no intention of seeking a lower target under those provisions. That's where I'd prefer to go if we go anywhere on this report.
Counselor Bodley.
Through you, Chair Freeman. I think maybe it would be helpful for me to conceptualize, one of the things that's coming out of the proposed amendment is the reduction from 80 residents and jobs per hectare to 60. Do we, is it possible to get an example within the city of what the difference between those two things might look like? Do we have a district plan that, or a subdivision that's at 80 and would have potentially looked different at 60? Just curious.
Through you, Counselor Freeman. Currently, I'm not aware off the top of my head of any specific subdivisions that are that high. I know the most recent one that the city undertook some planning for was Beaver Creek Metals, and that was planned to achieve about 58 people and jobs per hectare. And that requires a node in the district plan area that has some apartments, some stacked townhouses, and in addition to street townhouses and single detached dwellings, semi-detached dwellings. So that is quite a high number to achieve. The reason that we express some concern from staff levels, because 80 people and jobs per hectare is actually higher to achieve, you actually have to plan for higher densities to achieve that, when you factor in undeveloped lands, stormwater areas, that kind of thing. So the region, for example, undertook an exercise of what it actually would entail to plan for that level of density, given some, because the target is applied region wide, and we'd have to actually plan for densities that are north of 100 people and jobs per hectare, which is quite high, and it really does change the look and feel of the neighborhood area. So we feel from staff level that 60 is much more reasonable, it's only five more than the current target of 55, given our, the level of greenfield land that we have left in City Waterloo, it'll still be a bit of a challenge to achieve that, but it's an approachable challenge, so that's where our position was.
Thank you, I think that was very helpful. Did you have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Is everyone, oh, sorry, my apologies, Counselor Bodley.
Visual distractions. Sorry, through Chair Freeman. I just had another question around, aside from the density targets, regarding the urban boundary changes outside of a municipal review, and I guess for a lower tier municipality like us, I'm curious whether there are any impacts to a lower tier municipality on that aspect of it.
Through you, Chair Freeman. Not directly. Any expansions would happen at the regional level, in consultation with local municipalities, of course, but that comment there was to flag that that is one of the principal changes that's being proposed by the province, and it may have implications at a local level if an adjacent municipality were to apply for that level of expansion. It's unlikely that the region would apply for any expansion, given their framework with the countryside line, but that tool would be brought forward if these amendment goes forward.
Counselor Bonagor.
Through you, Counselor Freeman. Thank you for all the feedback and for counsel's discussion, and it helps, so I'm going to withdraw the motion that I made. Counselor Henry's suggestion encompasses both of my concerns, so I'd like to leave my, what I raised there.
So I'll turn to Counsel Henry. It may be that we don't need a separate motion, it may be that the discussion we've had at the table is informative for staff, and so I'm looking to, Counselor Henry, did you want to make an alternative motion, or do you want to lean into our conversation?
I'd look to Mr. Martins and Mr. Rapp to see if the conversation counsel has is sufficient for them to work on comments, or whether they'd like me to craft some direction, which I'd half-written before I got here, but decided against it, but now we're having a conversation.
Through Counselor Freeman to Counselor Henry, the discussion we had and the fact that no action still means we can do exactly as our counsel wishes, which is achievement of all our original policies in the official plan, we've received enough direction with that, thank you.
Is every nodding heads on that? Okay. So where this is concerned, I'm looking for a mover to approve the motion as listed in the agenda. Counselor Henry? Counselor Bodley? All those in favor? That's carried, thank you. The next item is with regard to exemptions pursuant to 34 bracket 10.0, 0.2, and 45 bracket 1.4 of the Planning Act, and we do have a presentation from Mr. Cotter on this item, so welcome, Mr. Cotter, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Freeman, members of counsel. We are into a technical area of the Planning Act, so I thought I would just provide a very brief presentation to counsel, guessing you may have some questions around these detailed provisions, view for a period of two years unless counsel grants the exemption under 34 10 0 2. So essentially, the right to file an amendment application to the new zoning bylaw must be consented to by counsel. The Planning Act still does allow minor variance applications to be submitted to the regulations of the new bylaw. And then similarly, under Section 45 3 1, it prevents minor variance applications from being advanced where counsel considers a site-specific or privately initiated zoning bylaw amendment to come forward. So if somebody comes forward and submits a site-specific zoning application, they're essentially prevented from filing that variance application for two years. Through the comprehensive zoning bylaw review, counsel will recall that a number of delegations expressed concern with the uncertainty around how 34, the exemption would be applied under Section 34 within the city of Waterloo. And again, the intent of the bylaw is that it's generally not in the public interest for the city to receive zoning bylaw amendments immediately following the enactment of a comprehensive zoning bylaw. The principles and the intent of the bylaw should be adhered to, and the provisions of the Planning Act were added in on that basis. The zoning bylaw itself, just as counsel is aware, is a principle-based citywide bylaw, and as such, it doesn't necessarily capture every development concept or zone for unknown site constraints, so it's a higher-level document, it doesn't get into the minutia of each individual property. So in certain instances, it may be necessary and appropriate to file zoning bylaw amendments, and those could be to respond for both to site constraints, to align with legislation, to tailor zoning to unusual parcel configurations, and for a variety of reasons. So following the comprehensive zoning bylaw, counsel directed staff to bring a report back to counsel for consideration to address essentially automatic exemptions. And we pulled together a list based on the feedback that we received from both the development industry and through our conversations with the new zoning bylaw, and those are set out in Appendix A and Appendix B of the staff report. With respect to the zoning bylaw provisions, there's exemptions that apply to geographic areas, to irregular parcel configurations, to a specific range of site constraints, to the transitional zones, the FD and the zone change zones that are contained in the bylaw, for items that are set out that are strategic initiatives for the city, so applications that may relate specifically or primarily to affordable housing, the environment or conservation of heritage matters, applications initiated by the municipalities and the school boards, in particular, the universities, given their funding limitations and the timing that it takes to get applications forward, as well as for things like the city to initiate general amendments. So the city, just on that note, has initiated general amendments. We are at a staff level, just commencing that process, we're going to bring forward general amendments. It's been six months since we passed the bylaw to correct some minor issues, as well as to respond to a few additional community items that have been raised through the subsequent conversations with the Planning Act, or to the zoning bylaw enactment relating to daycares, the cannabis legislation, and rooftop patios, including a few other items as well. We also include multiple applications in the list of potential exemptions, so those would be zone change applications submitted in concert with an official plan amendment or a draft plan of subdivision, for legal non-conforming properties, for the technical sections under the Planning Act relating to holding provisions, bonusing, interim control bylaws, and temporary use bylaws, so 36 through 39 of the Planning Act, any alignment with respect to the Ontario Building Code, and with respect to where the official plan indicates that a use may be appropriate subject to the amendment of a zoning bylaw. So staff have advanced those for counsel's consideration, and we would look for counsel's direction on those, and whether those are appropriate, or whether they should be modified in any way. We did provide an exemption, or a qualifier, if you will, to the exemption that would limit the exemptions relative to the tower separations and the tower dimensions and those types of requirements that were set out in the new bylaw that relate to massing and design principles. And again, if they're minor in nature, they could be advanced, but anything that's more substantive would ultimately need to come back for counsel, specifically for consideration. With respect to the Committee of Adjustment, fairly straightforward, anything that required a change to the Ontario Building Code, anything through detailed design that relates to engineering or utility, sometimes those technical disciplines result in some modifications needing to the zoning regulations. And then again, for opportunities where we can get, you know, more landmark buildings or enhanced architecture and urban design, where we at a staff level push-through site plan to achieve those things, sometimes amendments are required through the zoning bylaw, and again, to get that good urban design, if we can do that through a variance, we'll certainly support that process. Any application that's not captured within these exemptions would have to come forward to counsel for individual consideration. So the exemption doesn't, if counsel elects to remove something from the list that staff have provided, it simply means that when an application, a potential application comes forward, we would bring that individual item to counsel for consideration on a case-by-case basis. The modifications with respect to the exemptions would require a resolution of counsel, so counsel at any point in time can modify the exemptions or the list of exemptions, and we will continue at a staff level to monitor what we're seeing out there in the industry, and if there's concerns, of course, we would report back to counsel and see if modifications were required. And final point I have is, as in, counsel will recall from kind of the planning one-on-one that I did before, the chart of the planning process on the bottom, essentially, the exemptions that are provided by counsel through this process in no way fetter counsel's right to consider the application. It's very clear in our schedules that we laid out in the staff report that even though counsel may exempt an application, it does not mean that it will support the application in whole or in part. The onus is still on the proponent of the application to demonstrate that the application represents good planning, represents compliance with the appropriate policy documents, and is in the public interest. So if counsel has any questions, that's the end of my presentation, pretty detailed Planning Act requirements, but I'll try and do the best I can to answer your questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cotter. Questions, counsel? Mayor Jaworski.
Thank you, through the chair. We're trying to guess the future here of what might happen the next two years, so I guess step one is, when does this two-year time period start counting with respect to the new comprehensive zoning bylaw when it's under appeal today?
Through you, Chair Freeman. The moratorium or the two-year timeframe starts September 10th, 2018, so we're six months in already.
Okay, so that might make the rest irrelevant, but if somebody has an assemblage of land and they plan on putting, say, multiple towers on there, I'm thinking about the tower separation issue, they, when they come to us with their assemblage of land and say they want to put up the Tower 1 and Tower 2 over a period of years, this probably wouldn't affect them because they won't have Tower 2 to be discussed until years down the line, once the two-year moratorium's gone anyway, is that correct?
Through you, Chair Freeman. Possibly. It depends on, again, a lot of circumstances. Most of the developers, though, will want some level of certainty before they put a shovel in the ground for the first tower. And again, the way we've structured the recommendations for the exemptions to counsel is, if there was a minor modification to a tower dimension, for example, so you go from 40, which is the maximum in the bylaw, to 42, then that's a fairly minor modification that could proceed forward. If it was something more, somebody was coming in for 55, for example, off of the 40, again, that would come back specifically to counsel, and then counsel would have to determine whether that application should proceed or not at this point in time. The alternative is, is it gets postponed now for a year and a half, and then they file the applications, and we would have to process them.
Fair enough, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? My question you answered at the very end, which was that counsel's decision wouldn't be fettered if they did say that they would allow an application to come forth, so I appreciate that. So seeing no more questions, is there someone willing to move this report and recommendation? Moved by Counselor Vasek, seconded by Counselor Bodley. Comments, Counselor Henry?
I would like to move an amendment to the motion that's on the floor, and that is to Item 2, Recommendation 2, to add the words "accept Item 1A, 1B, and 2 in Appendix A," as I'd circulated to counsel over the weekend I intended to do. I'd comment on that if I had a seconder.
Please comment on it. Okay, seconded by Counselor Bonagor, and go ahead.
So I appreciate how staff have laid out the exemption framework, the lack of fettering is important, and carving out the qualifiers around the tower regulations is helpful. At the same time, I think the province has provided certain powers to counsel, and in light of your need from the community to find some sense of stability after many years of slogging through following comprehensive zoning bylaw, and that there is an ability of counsel to weigh that in whether an application should proceed in the first two years, and I think we should have that opportunity to do that on a wider range of applications than would be left with staff's recommendation. In particular, I think the wide geographic exemptions that I've laid out in 1A and B are areas of potential, potentially high community concern, particularly the major transit station area piece. Staff even notes that the region has to complete an MCR first before we're even thinking about why that would apply, but it would apply right now. So my preference would be to expand the exemptions rather than to retract the exemptions, I think that provides more stability for industry as well. And on 2, I think most people would say that they had irregular land parcel configuration or other constraints, that's a very wide exemption to be able to drive through, and we should be able to see those as the provincial legislature intended us to be able to see those when those came through. The rest that I would propose leaving, I think, are very well scoped, to very particular circumstances that are quite reasonable, including areas of affordable housing, heritage preservation, and jobs, and to the extent that the exemptions that would be left are crafted as they would, it may even encourage people to bring forward some heritage preservation or some affordable housing to be able to get their application through the door in the first year and a half. I don't know if it will, but it could, and I think that would be helpful.
So for clarity, does counsel understand what the amendment is? So it's essentially to remove any restrictions of counsel hearing a change? With no further discussion, I'm going to just ask for people to, yep?
If I can just add, just one comment is, I think this is a really strong idea as well, because when it comes to, you know, zoning amendments, I think location alone should not be enough, and hopefully by having, if a design or a proposal meets additional parameters, that makes it a stronger design for, like, to consider for the community. That's what I'd be hoping to see.
Counselor Bodley.
Just as, to play devil's advocate for a second here, and perhaps to get comments from Mr. Cotter, by imposing this basically year-and-a-half moratorium on hearing exemptions to the zoning bylaw, particularly Uptown, are we concerned that this is just going to lead to landowners uptown holding on for another year and a half until they can present their exemption to the zoning bylaw? Is that something we should be wary of?
Through you, Chair Freeman. It's a difficult question to answer. Certainly, there's a component of this to look at it from an economic development lens, if you will. The simple reality is, is that counsel is controlling the automatic exemptions that it's providing through this process. It doesn't mean that an application that has merit and is appropriate within the Uptown will not proceed, it simply means that if an application, rather than having a geographic exemption granted automatically, it just means that staff will bring that application back to counsel, and counsel will then determine whether it should proceed or not. And again, counsel would use its discretion to say, this is too far outside the scope of what our planning framework is, and as such, may want to hold the current framework as it stands for another 18 months, or counsel may agree based on the nature of what's being proposed to advance. And again, it could be for all kinds of reasons, whether it's a landmark building, or an irregular lot parcel, or the site constraints in the Uptown around flood plains or high water tables, many of those constraints exist in other locations as well. So I think what counsel's simply saying is, we want to control a little bit of the decision-making, a little bit more at this point in time, and again, it's a resolution of counsel. If counsel, six months or a year from now, wants to revisit this, happy to do so with direction to staff.
Is there any other questions on the amendment? Mayor Jaworski.
No, sorry, not a question, just a comment that I think it's important to know that our comprehensive zoning bylaw consultation for the new councils, I think they know, it went on for three years, we heard a lot, if you're a major landlord, we heard from you, and we heard from a lot for over three years, so, and a lot of those considerations in the last report and back in September, whenever it was, we're certainly taking into account. I think it's just more, you know, how much we want to rest on what we've done and how many, how much wiggle room we want to give automatically, and at the end of the day, people can still come here anyway, so I think it's a good idea for the most recent motion.
I support the amendment. I think more broadly, it does hit home on the comments that the previous council said about being open for business and being seen more broadly as being open for business. And it's meant, in my estimation, it's meant as no intent to say that I don't agree with the fact that changes to our comprehensive should come through a process, because they should, and I think that's fair, and this will still facilitate that, so. See, any more comments on the amendment, counsel? All in favor of the amendment? That's carried. Now we'll go back to the original motion with the amendment. Any comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cotter and Mr. Rapp, for your department and all your hard work on this. Appreciate it. I still think it's quite an accomplishment you pulled off with just a very few handfuls of people appealing a document of that magnitude. So thanks, thanks again. We are now on to the section of the agenda informal formal public meetings for which there is none. Consideration of notice of motion given at a previous meeting, there's none. Is there any notices of motion? Seeing none. Communications and correspondence, regional information and correspondence, nothing on either of that. Unfinished business, council? Seeing none. Any new business, council? Okay, and any questions? Seeing none, we're off to adjournment of this section of the meeting. Moved by Counsel Henry, who's just waiting to take over the hot seat. Oh, wait a second, right, Counsel Bonagor.
I guess I move to your seat? Or do you play musical chairs?
Yes, the mayor that plays musical chairs. Everybody else just sit there. Well, I guess I'll take that. This is the Special Finance and Strategic Planning Committee meeting, 2019 capital budget for Monday, February 4th, 2019, looking to counsel for a disclosure of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof. Counsel Bonagor.
It may not be relevant, but I just wanted to disclose that I work at Privater Institute, so if anything comes up regarding that institute, I will excuse myself.
I don't think we have a specific item on those, so fair enough. Looking to others. As I did at our first budget meeting, declare on capital budget reference 635 due to my spouse's place of employment. That item is a routine project that falls on recommendation number 18 in this, so should any member of council choose to wish to discuss that routine item when it comes up, please tell me you're about to do so, so I can do the appropriate thing and leave the room. And if not, we'll hold some approval of that item until the end of the meeting, so we're not playing too many musical chairs. The mayor's moved around enough, I think, for one afternoon. We can get you to do a little jig during the meeting if that'll help you get you to your number of visitors. That's pretty good. Okay, seeing no further disclosures, there are no minutes to approve, there are no presentations that are standalone nor delegations, and that takes us to the staff report on routine capital projects. I think the opening presentation as an overview is from Ms. Patel.
Good afternoon, Chair Henry, Mayor Jaworski, and members of council. As the chief financial officer of the city, it is my privilege to kick off the capital budget review day-to-day with council. As you see, we have Ms. Philippa Reynolds and her team right here. They have got the computer and all the capital databases here, so that if there are any changes, they will be tracking it. If there are any capital budget sheets that you'd like to see, we will be able to put it up on the slide. And my presentation today will provide an overview of the capital budget decision-making process that has been undertaken at the staff lab, and the process that follows today with council, leading up to the decision-making on February 11th by council. In early 2018, budget targets or limits were established for each department, taking into account the priorities set out in the asset management plan, the dollars available in our reserve and reserve funds, and the commitments that have been made through the D.C. bylaw and any other legislative requirements. Thereafter, the departments developed their preliminary capital budget, taking into account the public consultation and studies, as that are shown on the slide over here, and other factors that the departments considered in developing their preliminary budget were the strategic plan priorities, asset management plan priorities, and past council commitments. The preliminary budget was then prioritized against the funding targets that we mentioned earlier, to assess projects that could fit within the target, and those were submitted for consideration and incorporated into the budget. All other projects were included in the over-target category. Mid to late 2018, the staff budget committee reviewed the projects across the entire city and against citywide strategic priorities, looked at the impact on reserves and policy requirements, and finalized the proposed capital budget that is before council. All of the above steps are somewhat iterative in reaching a final decision on balancing the competing priorities with the funding that is available in our reserve and reserve funds. Finally, in late 2018, the capital budget was finalized, and budget documents were produced and presented to council in December. This is essentially a summary of the one-year and the ten-year capital budget by strategic priority area as established in the 2015 to 2018 strategic plan approved by council. As you will notice, there is significant emphasis on infrastructure renewal, coming in at fifty-five percent of the budget in the one year, and at sixty percent in the ten-year capital budget program. Next is our investment in strong community, coming in at twenty-nine percent in the one-year capital program, and at twenty-one percent in the ten-year program. These priorities are the key drivers of the capital budget that is before council today. Details of the investment by strategic priority are available on our website in the capital budget documents section and shown as appendix in that section. A few key points about our ten-year capital program. The 2019 capital budget totals $105 million. The ten-year program totals $549 million. All of this is funded through our reserve and reserve funds, whether these are our tax-based enterprise or development-charge reserve and reserve funds. Of note, the balance in our capital infrastructure reinvestment reserve fund and the capital reserve fund is $3,674. These two reserves are the key reserves that fund most of the capital projects unless they're growth-related. Per council policy, the minimum balance required in these two reserves is $2 million. So you will see that there is not much flexibility there in the budget within the ten-year program to add on anything into the capital budget or to be able to advance it, because we're very close to the minimum requirement in these two reserves. There are several ways to slice and dice the capital budget data, and from an approval point of view, we analyze them as either being routine or non-routine capital projects. As shown on the slide, non-routine capital projects are those with a value greater than $2.5 million, or with a high public or council interest, or those that are such as such requested by council. Non-routine projects will be coming back to council for approval through a formal report at a later date. Council has an opportunity today to review and choose to change the classification of the projects from routine to non-routine or as they see fit. And today, council is being asked to approve the classification of the routine projects, so that on February 11th, these can be approved expeditiously. Analyzing the 2019 capital budget, about seventy-two percent of all our projects are routine, and this represents only thirty-one percent of the value of the projects. This slide provides you with a breakdown of the routine capital projects by department and for the four-year council term. The 2019 budget for routine projects is $32 million, and is the value of the projects that council will consider for approval on February 11th. And following this presentation, each commissioner will provide an overview of the departmental routine capital budget, and will be available to answer any questions. Our goal today is threefold, is to provide an opportunity for discussion of all routine and non-routine projects with each director. These are all in the capital budget book, and our staff are here to be able to answer these questions. The second goal is to present council with the 2019 routine projects for each division to council, and then to get approval from council on the classification of these routine From a process standpoint, staff have proposed the following process. For projects impacting the 2019 capital budget, all changes, additions, deletions, need to be identified as a priority, and to be accompanied by a council resolution directing staff to explore the possibility of funding the item in 2019. For projects in the forecast year, all changes, additions, deletions need to be identified with a council resolution directing staff to consider it in the three-year budget to follow, along with the new strategic plan priorities. Our next steps are essentially then for getting approval of the routine projects, and then for February 11th, to get the funding approval of these routine projects. So to assist in the decision-making, we have a report on the agenda, Corp. 2019-004, Routine Capital Project. This report lists the specific projects by department and also provides the operating impact of an approval for each 2019 capital project. This report is very relevant to our discussion today. And I will now be followed by departmental presentations, question and answers, and finance staff will be able to bring up any detailed capital projects she said may be needed for reference. And I'm open to any questions on the budget process, review process today.
Is council clear on the process we're going to undertake to date? Perhaps the questions will get there. Counsel Freeman, and I saw maybe another hand over here.
Thank you. It's just, I want to make sure that I am clear, if that's okay. So I just want to make sure that we're dealing primarily, like, any decisions we make today are related to 2019, and if we want to make a recommendation on something in the forecast, we bring that forward today, too?
This would be an opportunity, certainly, to bring it forward, but it doesn't have to be today, if it's in the forecast years. But if you do give us a heads-up, it is direction for us to then consider it when we are working on the 2020 budget, which we are doing internally right now at a staff level, so it would certainly be a heads-up to us to consider it while we're doing the planning stage right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of clarification? Yeah, I think that's always helpful. So I know we've had through some of the business plan presentations, one particular project in 2028, and 2028 can really be substituted for the 10th year of any forecast over the last decade, for an elevator for the Button Factory. An appropriate resolution for Counsel Lavith to move at some point today, and I can facilitate when, is that that be considered in the 2020 to 2022, you know, capital budget when that comes back, subject to a review of strategic planning items, and staff will report back to us on many months when we get another budget cycle, but that would signal some intent. And as Ms. Patel had noted at the beginning, because there's limited room in the ten-year forecast for dollars, prioritizing one item into those three years will necessarily mean some things may not be able to happen in those three years, and staff will be able to weigh those as we've finished a strategic plan, and we've looked at all of that, and then council can pronounce on that when we next get together for budget season, which is far fewer months from now than I know many of us will hope for after next week. Counsel Freeman?
So in that same vein, Counsel Henry, a couple of things that I'd raised earlier, being the splash pads and the potential to tender those at the same time to save money. So do we need a motion from council to consider moving those up in the budget so that they could be tendered together? Like, how do we, how would you recommend handling that?
Yeah, if the idea was to, what I'm hearing is that's a movement of an item in the forecast, in the council term, but in the forecast, into 2019. So Ms. Patel suggested that would require a resolution of council for staff to explore whether it's feasible to include in the 2019 budget, and we'd see that back next week.
I actually think it's 2020, because in 2019, they're just doing the design, so I think it's still in the forecast, because the tender wouldn't probably go till the end of this year at the earliest.
So I think those will be excellent questions when community services comes up, so maybe we can parking lot that and get some capital budget under our belt before we go there.
And then where it's appropriate to make a motion about finding a permanent funding source for the asset management plan other than a levy, I'd like you to signal that, too.
I think my prior signal on that was that standing direction from council is not fixed on any particular solution, but has a long range of solutions, and that the balance of the year will be engagement with the public and on council, and with council on those. I know I've been working with Cassandra Pacey and others to identify a robust public and council engagement schedule on that, so I don't think we need a standing resolution to determine something ahead of further conversations from that point. So I think that's been noted, if that makes some sense. So the way this will proceed first is we'll see Mr. Anderson come up to do a presentation on his area. We'll then look at the routine, non-routine classification in his department. If we want to move something from routine to non-routine, we'd identify it at that point, and it would be tracked, and then we move on. And that way, we've just got a nice rolled-up motion at the end of the day, that Olga and Julie can massage into something that makes us sound like we know what we're doing in terms of motions, and we get one big smack in approval, unless we've got some objection, in which case we'll deal with that as we get there. So, Mr. Anderson, take her away.
All right. Thank you, Chair Henry, and members of council, and it's my pleasure to kick off the first of five department presentations we'll hear this afternoon. And of course, I'm focused on the Chief Administrative Officer Division. I am going to guide you to your documents, just so that we're aligned a little bit. So page 15 of the capital budget book, pages, the top page 15, it's a reflection of the CAO area and the forecasted expenditure over 10 years. So just to kind of help us guide our way along here. So over the next 10 years in capital investment, there is $59 million planned in the CAO department, and for 2009 in particular, the planned capital expenditure is $11.4 million, and I'll unpack that further. On the screen here, you can kind of see a breakdown of the various allocations of where the funds are being utilized. Pages 17 to 21 of the capital budget book, they show the specific projects, so the actual line items and the timing of the projects over the 10-year horizon. And also included in those pages, in the fourth column, is a descriptor for the project type, and that includes either rehabilitation, growth, and strategic categories. And you will note that our growth numbers are very high over this term of council over the next four years, and that's primarily driven by two major projects. That's the West Side Employment Land Servicing, and council has seen that come forward through the planning steps, and the budgets, of course, are for actually construction out in the field grading of the subdivision and all the pipes and infrastructure required out there. The second major project in our capital forecast that kind of drives that blip on the screen is the allocation for the Uptown, second Uptown parking structure. So our capital investment by theme, the seventh column in the capital budget book pages also delineates the projects by theme, and as you can see in 2019, and over the 10-year period, our primary resource allocation is really in land development and economic development initiatives. So again, stemming back to those two major projects that I spoke of. So that's another way to look at our CAO area capital program. And then, as Ms. Patel spoke, we've also aligned our capital infrastructure resources against the strategic pillars from the strategic plan, and it's not surprising that economic development is our driver in the CAO area at eighty-seven percent, and then 10 percent So capital projects by reporting criteria, this information is reflected on page 13 of your council package now, and it shows the non-routine and the routine projects in aggregate total here. So $49 million of the $59 million program is non-routine, and so, again, those are projects that will come back to council on a report basis, and individually, we would request approval of those projects to move forward. And then the routine projects, $1.237 million worth in 2019, and that's really the essence of the decision-making for council today on the CAO area. You'll also see the forecast for both non-routine and routine into 2020 to 2028 on the screen. So just nearing the end here, this is just a quick snapshot of some 2018 earlier approved projects. this is just a quick snapshot of some 2018 earlier approved projects. We've got the Adel Rec Center in the upper left of the screen. That's a project underway through the Economic Development Team. The Idea Corridor over on Philip Street Carnegie, which council is a little bit familiar with. Down in the bottom right, our investment in the Accelerator Centre at the David Johnson Research and Technology Park. Bottom of the screen is the Employment Lands out on the west side. And then on the left there, that parking drawing, it's tough to see, but that is our Bridgeport and Regina Street land acquisitions, AKA Lot B in our uptown system. And then the center is our Evolved Green, which was celebrated just last week. So some snapshots of projects coming out of the CAO area. So I can end there, and myself and my team are available in the audience to answer any questions.
Counsel, are there questions about any of the capital projects under the CAO divisions? Counsel Freeman?
Through Chair Henry. So I had that question in terms of the relationship between the, up, the, on the routine side, you've listed that staff will be undertaking an update to the, the parking study or an updated parking study. As it says, Parking Utilization Study, and then it's item number 113. And then in that study, in the description, it said it was related to understanding the impact of ION on parking in the uptown. And then under the non-routine, there's item 119 related to an uptown parking expansion. And I just, I guess I'm trying to understand the relationship between doing this expansion and the study. Like, so will the study be done first before an expansion is considered, or?
Mr. McFadden?
Yes, through you, Chair Henry. So what we're proposing is a parking study each year for five years, roughly in that $23,000 range. So updating as trends evolve, as usage patterns evolve with ION implementation happening. So it would, one would potentially impact the other, but they are certainly very separate items on the list in terms of, one being an analysis of kind of what's happening and another being the implementation of an actual parking expansion in uptown.
And Justin, it's fair to say that the uptown parking expansion line has been carried forward a number of years in the budget, and we haven't pulled the trigger yet.
That's right. It's, it's, it's really, in many ways, a placeholder that gives us the opportunity to take advantage of a, of a situation, if it presents itself, for us to, to go ahead and do that.
That actually is very helpful because that was kind of my, my question was whether or not by approving this, we're actually approving this to get constructed.
Yeah.
It's a non-routine project, so it would have to come to council for any dollars to come out.
Yeah.
And then, I, and because I also wanted to understand the relationship between a parking expansion and the, the operating line associated with evaluating the cost of parking, the cost of free parking on two hours, right? So like, it, do we count every single spot in the uptown when we assess the free parking?
Sorry, Jeff, were you gonna? Okay.
Go ahead.
So yes, we have our, our roughly 2,000 spaces, and that would be part of the analysis. And that is a combination of, of free parking and, and paid parking. And that would all be part of that annual analysis that we're proposing to do.
Okay. I, I'm going to have more questions on that on the operating side when that comes back. But I just, I wanted to better understand that whole relationship. So thank you.
I think it would be helpful, staff, if, since that was going into next week. Items B27 and B28 are related, related to a report approved by council in mid-October 2017. It may be helpful to recirculate that report. So council is familiar with the origin of B27 and B28 ahead of operating budget day. I had next on my list, Counselor Vasik, questions in the land that is CAO.
Thanks. Through you, Chair Henry. So thanks, everyone, who's answered questions that I've already had about the DuPont lot resurfacing. I just want to get a little bit of a better understanding because it is a routine project. And as we're thinking about active transportation and these parking studies, but then also thinking about needing parking lots to be safe and maintained properly if we're going to keep them going. So I realize there's a safety aspect here. But I guess I'm just curious, who uses the DuPont lot? Do we want it to be parking forever? Is this an interim solution that just has to happen? What are other opportunities there, just generally?
I can maybe start that one through Chair Henry, and then Justin will weigh in as well. So the DuPont lot is the, the parking lot right adjacent to the library off of DuPont. So certainly it has utilization from library patrons. In addition, it's one of our day permit use locations. So we sell permits to employees of the uptown, and they would utilize that, for example, out of the Marsland Center. There would be permit users in there throughout the day. The parking lot itself, it is a routine project in terms of asphalt resurfacing. I think you'll see a pattern over time that we're moving around to a number of our surface lots just to rejuvenate them before they deteriorate too quickly and become more of a liability for us. So that's the asphalt paving. I think there's always a mindset of kind of the active transportation mode. Do we have enough spaces, the right type of spaces, et cetera, when we do re-strike these lots? And then the retaining wall, which is adjacent to the parking lot, it's been in there, in that location, probably 40 or 50 years. And it's showing signs of weakness and failure just from water seepage, so does need attention as well. I would say, in closing, with respect to your question, what's the future of this lot? I'd probably characterize it for all lots that they are really probably intensification locations all through the uptown. And this one would, would be no different than our other surface lot assets. But in the meantime, we do need to operate them, yeah.
And given it's the library's parking lot, I'm sure they would have some interest in its future in the long run and would be surprised to learn it was disappearing within the window of resurfacing, looking at the deputy CEO, CEO right behind Justin there, with active keen interest on that end. Any other questions for the CAO division? Counselor Bonnigro, did I see your hand? I thought I might have. That's fine. I saw a look. It was a look, not a hand. Okay, got it. Some people. Yeah, got it. Okay. Counselor Bodley?
Sorry, just on project number 142, the Lean Six Sigma stuff. I know that, I've had conversations with this. I know that it's routine in nature, but I was just hoping to publicly comment about something that we had discussed earlier about perhaps the value of having somebody from the Lean Six Sigma team coming to council and explaining a little bit more about the process and the benefits that, the efficiencies that, that we're going to see as a corporation behind this initiative. So just understanding that it's routine in terms of a funding perspective, but that we would like, I, I anyways, would like to see some information about the, the initiative.
Through you, Chair Henry. Absolutely. Counselor Bodley, it's early days for us to launch the program. It's kind of subject to council's approval, and we would certainly take that away and, and would appreciate the opportunity actually to unfold what the program looks like and perhaps what we see in terms of more detailed layout of the program over the course of time and reporting our successes. Because I truly do believe it's an opportunity to celebrate success.
Certainly hope it will be. Now, Counsel Bonnigro.
Well, the other councillors, through your chair. The other councillors are dealing with a lot of the things. But one thing I'd like to, one routine item I'd like to see potentially brought forward to the, the three-year budget that we're going to be working towards is some funding from the Public Art Implementation Budget. There is nothing listed until 2027. So if some capacity could be brought forward earlier than that, I would greatly appreciate that. I don't know if any other councillors would be interested in supporting that idea.
I'll, I'll sort of start, and I think Brad may finish this. There, you're, you're absolutely correct. There is, the, the funding that is being requested as part of this budget cycle is not until 2027, 2028. Brad can probably shed some light on exactly what we're, we're doing there. What I will say is that, leading up to that, there will be other allocations to the, to the Public Art Fund as we, as, as capital projects get built within the city. So Rack Center, for example, there will be an allocation for public art when that happens and other projects that we have on, on the go, East Side Library. So there will be allocations throughout that period. But I'll hand it over to you to talk about the last two years.
So through Chair Henry, to expand on Justin's comments, that is correct. There are various projects that have public art components within the project themselves. The West Side Employment Lands, the Waterloo Memorial Recreation Complex Expansion, et cetera. Really what we're facing around the public art reference that you're referring to is as projects that don't include public art are contributing to the public art reserve based on policy, we're trying to grow that reserve balance to something of, a little bit more substantial that we can actually invest in public art. So the challenge of advancing that would be the public art balance itself. So we can look at that over time, but the, the challenge will be the reserve balance.
As long as I know something is coming, I'm good.
Okay, so we'll, we'll park the thought and anticipate based on first comments on strategic plan that this will come up through strategic plan. And rather than try to advance Reference 114, there may be other ways to deal with that that are more appropriately dealt with through the strategic planning process based on the answer we heard. Okay. But useful to know, I, I see our strategic plan lead parked deep in the airroom, so always useful to, to hear these as we go forward. Any other items under the CAO contingent here? Seeing none, are there any, any items that are listed as routine that council absolutely needs to hear more about and shouldn't be classified as routine? Seeing none, we'll take those as is and, and continue, continue them forward. Next up, presentation, thank you, Mr. Anderson and your team, which in this case is Mr. McFadden. Look for Gloria, Deputy CEO of Waterloo Public Library, to up and present on capital expenditures at the library. I, I hear we have some. Some, some big, important ones.
Exciting ones. So, good afternoon, Chair Henry, Mayor Jaworski, and members of council. On behalf of CEO Lori Clark, I'd like to present the capital budget for the Waterloo Public Library. Over the next six slides, I'll be referring to pages 77 and 78 of the capital budget book as all the projects are listed there for your reference. So as you can see in the yellow summary box, the 10-year capital investment plan for the library is $26.8 million. And of that, the planned capital expenditure for 2019 is $4.1 million. So referring specifically to 2019, of the $4.1 million capital investment, 3.7 is for the East Side Library Expansion Project. And the remaining investment is for routine operations studies, which is specifically our strategic plan implementation, technology refresh and upgrades, and the book and non-book digital collection growth. So referring to the $23 million investment between 2020 and 2028, looking at facility expansion, $4 million is for the East Side Library and $13 million is identified for the main library expansion and redevelopment project, which is 2025 and 2026. And the remaining $6 million over that nine years is for routine projects, facility refurbishment, productivity, strategic plan implementation, technology refresh and upgrades, and the book and non-book collection growth. So looking at the capital investment from the perspective of growth and rehabilitation, we can see that the East Side Library investment over the next few years is primarily growth-driven. And later in the 10-year program, with the expansion and rehabilitation of the main library being forecast, the investment is a combination of growth and rehabilitation. So moving to the capital investment by theme. For 2019, 90% will go to the East Side Library, and the remaining 10% will be split between the routine investments and collections, technology, and strategic plan implementations or initiatives. And over the 10-year period, the majority of the investment, 77% is for facility expansion, both the East Side branch and the main library expansion and redevelopment. And then the remaining investment over that 10 years is committed to routine operations. And again, those are listed in the capital budget book. So the Waterloo Public Library falls under the city's strong community strategic pillar. And we are privileged and honored to play a key role in building a community where everyone belongs, feels included, has free and equal access to programs and services, resources and information, and is just active and engaged in community life. So at Waterloo Public Library, we welcome an average of 4,347 people each day. Over 2,500 access our programs and services at our three, soon to be four, locations. And over 1,800 visit us remotely each day through our website. So this includes seniors, new Canadians, children, multi-generational families, those who seek community and togetherness, and also those who just want to be by themselves and be quiet. We welcome local and international students, job seekers, and those among us with no fixed address. We just welcome everybody. And that is the strength and the goal of our library. And we are striving to be a transformational force in the development of Waterloo and its citizens. So today, we're asking that council approve that the library projects listed be classified as routine and that these projects be considered for budget approval next week. So over the last few years, the majority of our capital budget investment has been our work with the city to explore the location and the conceptual design of the East Side Library. And that resulted in the East Side Library feasibility study, which was presented to council on November 20 in 2017. And to say that we're looking forward to the next phase, detailed design and construction, is, is actually an understatement. We are so excited, and the community is so excited to finally see library service extended to the east side. So thank you. And are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions for the library on all capital things library? Seeing none, thank you very much. Are there any items listed as routine that council believes they need, they need more information on in the future and should not be classified as routine? Seeing none, we'll take that as, as confirmed. I, I, I know, looking at the top-left picture, that's one I, I'm identifying more and more with. It's now just after 3 o'clock, which means my, my wife and an eight-month-old are now in the library for a, a playdate with, with one of their friends and the rest of those, so. It is, it is only a conflict of time because I'm here rather than there. And we did post a photo earlier this year of Finn getting his first library card. He happened to be screaming. I don't think it was anything about what you folks were doing. He was, he just does that. Maybe he didn't like the books we got him, I'm not sure. Okay, thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Takes us through library. Next up, we have Corporate Services. This would be Ms. Patel's other hat. And we're back to page 35 to 50 in the budget book.
Good afternoon, Chair Henry, Mayor Jaworski, and members of council. We typically go alphabetically, so I think Mark was ready to go, and so was I ready for him to go. But if I go first, I'm good with that, too. So as a Commissioner of Corporate Services, it is my privilege to present the capital budget for Corporate Services Department, along with my colleagues. The capital budget for Corporate Services is shown in detail in the budget book on pages 35 to 50, if you should wish to open it to look at any of our projects in there. Additionally, capital project sheets with more detail are available on our website, and they can be pulled up if you wish to look through any of them. and they can be pulled up if you wish to look through any of them. So this is a summary of the Corporate Services capital budget by theme. The 10-year capital budget totals $48.9 million. Here for council to consider is the 2019 budget only at $4.2 million. Breakdown of the 10-year program in very broad strokes is fleet management at $27.9 million, of which $24.4 million is replacement, and $3.4 million is for expansion. Equipment replacement at $10.9 million, primarily for our investment in technology for desktop refresh across the city, disaster recovery plan, cybersecurity, corporate relational database investment, and many more items. Technology refresh and upgrades is at $5.4 million over the 10-year period, and it includes end-user computing requirements, enterprise system backend support, PeopleSoft financials and HRMS regular upgrades, OpenText upgrade and integration. Focusing more on 2019, the key investments are fleet management at $2.5 million, again of which $2 million is replacement, and .4 is growth-related expansion. Equipment replacement is at $1.1 million and includes desktop refresh, disaster recovery plan, data center uninterruptible power supply, and other technology investments. Technology refresh is coming in at $262,000, which includes several smaller items of council chamber technology upgrade, end-user computing requirements, and enterprise application integration software. Studies at $187,000 relates to the corporate branding review, which is part of our 2015 to 2018 strategic plan recommendation. New programs at $100,000 is external call center support for bylaw enforcement pilot, and infrastructure management at $60,000 is investing in a fiber network. This is the same data shown in a pie chart. Essentially, the bulk of the 2019 capital investment is in fleet relating to replacement of vehicles and equipment replacement for technology. Over a 10-year period, fleet replacement and equipment replacement remain the key priorities, along with technology refresh and upgrades. As you can see from this chart, most of the capital projects are an investment shown into rehabilitation and replacement, which is the green line, and represents over 75% of the 2019 capital budget for Corporate Services, and almost 79% of the budget over the 10-year period. 10% of the 2019 budget relates to growth-based projects shown in the burgundy line, which are in the fleet division, and another 10% relates to strategic priorities from the last plan, and has investment in corporate branding, enforcement services, piloting of external call center support, and enterprise application backend support. The Corporate Services capital budget is aligned primarily with strategic priority of infrastructure renewal and also corporate excellence. 90% of the capital dollars, as you can see from this chart, are for infrastructure renewal and 10% towards corporate excellence. Looking at it by routine versus non-routine, most of our projects are routine projects. A summary is on page 15 of the capital budget book, if you should see the summary. Without listing all the projects in detail, the individual ones are shown on page 37 to page 50 of the budget book. Non-routine projects are very few and far between, and include the enforcement services pilot of external call center in 2019, and the corporate brand review, as identified in the strategic plan, in 2019. Future years non-routine include a website refresh and PeopleSoft HRMS vision. For consideration today is the classification of projects totaling $3,938, which are shown as routine projects. And with this, there's an image of some of the vehicles that we maintain in the fleet services division, pretty heavy equipment in fleet that we maintain. And with this, I wrap up my presentation, and I'm here with my colleagues from Corporate Services to answer any questions on our capital budget.
I saw from social media, Ms. Patel, that you watched the new salt come into the yard and ready to be sprayed, so getting very familiar with the big equipment, that all this finance money is being allocated to purchase. Looking to council for questions on capital items inside corporate, I see Council Freeman, then Council Bonagor, then Council Vasek, then Council Hanmer. I'll see if I can remember that. Go ahead, Council Freeman.
It's not a question, but I did want to build on what you were saying about that social media. Because this is one of the largest expenditures around fleet vehicles, I think it's really helpful, like the video we made around snow plowing and snow removal, and is to help people understand this fleet equipment and what the service change could look like or not when we make this investment. And like, I think any way that we can get out those messages about the kinds of equipment that we're buying, why we're buying it, and the service that those equipments provide, or in some cases, a lot of the equipment does two or three things, right? Does snow removal in the winter, mows the lawn in the summer, and so on. So it would be, I think, really helpful. I know we have the open house and tons and tons of people come, but the videos are, I think, are really good.
Through you Chair Henry, to Council Freeman, thank you very much for that suggestion. And we did have a question from Council Vasek along the same lines, also with respect to how we sharing the equipments. You're absolutely right. The trackless, which is used in summer for various tasks, is used in winter for clearing sidewalks, so absolutely the equipment is shared. Bulk of the dollars are replacement, but we certainly still emphasize as to the advances that we're making there.
I think there's alignment, Council Freeman, with that thought and some of the thoughts I've shared with asset management staff in terms of public engagement this year and service levels and how we engage on all that. I think there's a gap in how the public understands what service looks like, and the video of winter control, it was a good joint municipal effort at showcasing a common area of concern, and I know that's something that we're trying to talk about internally, staff are talking about internally, to see where we can advance those that are helpful. Yes, the wonderful world of things you're supposed to put out and things you're not could be a very useful video, but all the big trees in your backyard, not supposed to be in your front yard. I next have Councilor Bonagor, then Council Vasek, and Council Hanmer.
Thank you, through you, Council Henry. It's just one question on clarification. So on line 422, under fleet management, there's the fleet transformation request for consulting services regarding the fleet management information system. I'm just curious, I know that there's also been some staffing requests, so is this, just so I'm clear, is this very different from the staffing requests that you're also making when it comes to fleet?
Through you, Council Henry. Yes, this budget line item is different than the staffing request. So in 2018, we had an external consultant do a review of our fleet management operations, and through that review, they had a number of recommendations to help us move forward in fleet management at the city, and some of those included purchasing a new fleet management system. This value does not look at the cost of a new fleet management system, but perhaps some external support that we may need to use when looking to buy the best system for the city and what that looks like. Other areas that the consultant highlighted were additional training that would help our fleet technicians and would help our fleet acquisitions to make sure that we're properly developing specifications, and looking at the type of KPIs we can report on so we could have better reporting. So it's various initiatives that could be undertaken to help move forward with fleet using that money, but it's not all allocated to one. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I have Council Vasek.
Thanks through you Chair Henry. It's like, it might be small beans, council chambers and city hall technology, but because it is somewhere that we sit, I think $73,000 for 2000, like overall $140,000, and then $73,000 in 2019 proposed in budget is like, just how people might see, like, some of it's necessary, the technology. And I've actually heard from at least one person where they've said it's tough to hear on the, or it has been tough to hear sometimes online. I don't know if that's true all the time, or if it just happened to be the one time. But I guess I'm just curious about a little bit more information about what council chambers and city hall technology would entail, and if anyone's interested in knowing a bit more of that or making it non-routine, it might be more cumbersome than it's worth. I think we just need to know so that when people ask us, like, "Oh, do you just wanted to renovate where you hang out once a week?", then we will...
Very small renovation.
Yeah, it's very small. I mean, $73,000 isn't a lot overall, but I think $73,000 is a lot in people's day-to-day lives, so just to be mindful that we can have a conversation about like, why that happened and why it was important.
So if there's an answer that's satisfactory to you today, then it can still be routine, correct?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not putting a motion to make it non-routine, I am looking for similar information.
I was just reflecting what I thought I was hearing and confirming that back. I'll look to both Max and to Olga, it's her chambers and Max's stuff.
Through your Council Henry to Council Vasek, this project description has identified this dollar amount is not only being used by council chamber. Originally, this project was a council chamber and herb room, and during the last budget cycle, we worked with a financial analyst, we think, because we don't have any budget for the city hall meeting rooms, so we also expanded this budget, too. So currently, the dollar amount we're asking for is cover council chamber, herb room, and all city hall meeting rooms renovations. And the dollar amount we're asking for for 2019 is more focused on the voice system upgrade for the council chamber. We did our video system upgrade just two years ago, and that upgraded our council chamber from the old VGA system to high-definition system. And so far, our audio system is still okay, but it's hitting the 10-years mark, so it's a good idea to have a plan to upgrade some of its component. And if we have money left over, we can use some of the money for herb room and other city hall meeting rooms. Thank you.
We've certainly had audio system failures from time to time in here. That makes formal public meetings with a chamber full of members more difficult to run successfully and comply with our obligations for people to be able to hear everything we're doing up here. Those were not fun, so hopefully we'll get those fixed. Thank you, Council Hanmer.
Thank you through you, Chair Henry. My first question was actually asked and answered with Council Bonagor's question around the relationship between the fleet project and the staffing request that went along, so thank you for that. My other is just for a comment, because I've had some comments back about just how we're presenting some of our capital items, especially things like around the technology. It appears that we're doing a number of projects, when really, it's one project, and the way it's being funded is from different sources. So probably from a future look at how we present this information, somehow having a qualifier that says, this is one project and it's a number of different areas. Looks like we're doing a lot of website updates, for example, and it really is just one big refresh, so only a comment. Thank you.
I see finance staff writing things down, that's always good. Any other items in Corporate Services that council has questions about? Are there any items listed as Corporate Services routine projects that council believes it needs more information on and should no longer be classified as routine? Seeing none, thank you very much. I know we have some items that may come forward under Community Services to do some different things, so maybe it's an opportune moment to move one through eight just cleanly, to get those approved, and then that'll make it easier to work on the fly without... So all the stuff we've already done, just confirm the routine list rather than take a motion at the end, because we may have some divides on that, and I just want to make it clean for everybody. So I can get Mayor Jaworski, Council Hanmer, all those in favor of all the classifications we already did? So I was hearing from finance staff by email that that might be helpful for them before they, so it's easier for them to track if we start doing things. All right, so that takes us to Community Services. Commissioner Dykstra, the podium is yours.
All right.
It goes up.
Is that a good place for me right now?
I'm not sure it goes high enough, maybe after the $73,000.
There you go. Chair Henry, mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to provide the Community Services update on our capital plan for 2019 to 2028. The themes and overview are provided here. In the 10 years, the capital investment planned is $177.2 million for Community Services. For the 2019, the planned expenditure is $44.4 million. You'll see the key focus in those years or in the themes is around facility expansion, facility refurbishment, park expansion, and park rehabilitation. That theme is reoccurring through the presentation. The chart here shows the significant investment of Community Service capital over the 10-year period, and it again relates to growth being 39%, the rehabilitation being 38%, and the mix of the two, 10%. The remaining 12% is a combination of health and safety, strategic, and legislative projects. When you look at the themes, there's a definite one that stands out, and that's for 2019, and that's the 56%, and that's related to facility expansion, and that is linked to our WMRC project. For the remainder of the themes in 2019, there is a good mix of themes and initiatives noted there. When you look at the broader 10-year capital theme, the various themes, again, facility expenditures, sorry, facility expansion, facility refurbishment, the park rehabilitation, and the park expansion are key in those bigger themes. Shifting gears to the alignment with the strategic plan, it is no surprise you see the majority of the work in infrastructure renewal and strong community. Specific to the report that council's dealing with at this time of the 10-year capital budget for $177.2 million, the Community Service Department is seeking approval of $4.2 million as routine projects planned for 2019. We're succinct in what we've presented, and look for the opportunity to have discussions with council. The directors and myself are here to take those questions and advance things accordingly.
Certainly the shortest presentation per centimeter in height of the commissioner, I think. That was going to be pretty easy to begin with. Questions from council about the capital program and Community Services? I see Council Freeman. Go ahead, then Council Heath, then Council Bonagor.
So I just, I had a couple of questions. So with regard to the routine projects, the item 244 on the action sports parks, so is the item 244 just for the design? And then on the non-routine, is the capital to build them? Is that right?
I'll kick it off and ask Jeff to make his way here for that one.
Okay.
So there's, specific to the action sports park, 244...
And it's also listed in...
I have it.
220 and 221.
Just to confirm, 244 is...
Just all parks?
Yeah, all parks across the city is what we're dealing with. 226 is non-routine, I believe, so we'll be back in the chamber to release those funds.
No, it's 220 and 221.
Okay.
Sorry.
Both of which are also non-routine, but certainly...
They're non-routine, they're in the non-routine. Now, they're less than, like, they're... I just want to make sure that we've got enough money in there with regard to building these action sport parks, so that's, yeah, they're right here, 220 and 221.
So specific to Council Freeman's question, the, if memory serves me right, with those projects, there's a number of carry-forward pieces that will be coming forward to council as part of the update to actual build. Right now, we have money for the design, so that's covered. These dollars are... One facility of all the facilities will be able to be completed at this time, so there'll be a need for some conversation in the 2020 budget when we have a good understanding of what each facility will cost, and then we'll be bringing some further dollars forward in consideration of dollars needed for that at that time.
Okay, so I, like, for me, I'd like to see council advance direction of staff around making sure we have enough capital to do two things. One is to get these action sports built on the east and west side, and two, getting the splash pads also built on the east and west sides. That access to passive recreation in those parts of the city are critically important. And again, if we look demographically at the children under the age of 15 and where they reside in this city, based on the StatsCan data, you'll find that they reside in the suburbs. And so they're very much under service, because what we do have in that area is all program space, and we're very, very quick to remove people off program space when they're there to actively, like, passively recreate. And, well, I appreciate we don't kick people off of stuff at... And, well, I appreciate we don't kick people off of stuff at Waterloo Park. It is very, very, very challenging for families to get to Waterloo Park without having to drive. The other thing I had a question about was with regard to the master plan update. So in the routine side, you have expenditures associated with the master plan, so I just wanted to confirm that's based on the existing master plan, so it's 340?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the resources allocated under non-routine is in, so like, it's undertaking like a new... Actually, maybe it's not listed here. There's a, maybe it's coming in the forecast, but to do an update to the master plan. So it may not be listed today, Chair Henry.
Yes, I can offer some insight. So the first reference is to implementation of the previous, then we, and ongoing, and then we do have a line, 349, where we're looking at an update to our master plan, that being 10 years old at this point in time. We want to do a refresh and look at demographics, needs across the city, and that'll inform move-forward planning.
And through Chair Henry, I just, do I need to move that motion, Chair Henry, with regard to the sports parks and the splash pads?
My preference would be that we let everybody have questions to Commissioner Dykstra, and then we'll facilitate resolutions once we've had some of that. And so that way, we can go back on some of those. I want to make sure everybody has a term. We may, it may help the dialogue if we've had, everybody's had their piece around community services first.
Yeah. And I guess I just want to say, like, I'm comfortable rebalancing some of the share of parks data amongst the whole city instead of not just in one park.
And that may be a focus of some interesting conversation. So I have Councilor Vasek next on community services. And you had your hand up, and I'm calling on you next.
Well, thank you through you, Chair Henry. Okay, so I did ask about solar panels, and you did get back to me, and thank you. I just haven't had a lot of time to review until recently. So I guess I'm just, it looks like solar panels are being explored, yes, for roofing and rehabilitation.
Through the chair, to the councilor, yes. We are looking at, with the roofing projects, we are looking at solar opportunities and considering that. And the models with the provider would vary, and looking at whether they do some front-end funding, and we're exploring that, whether we do the front-end funding, who does the maintenance, all those pieces are being considered right now by the facility design and management team.
Great. And so I'm not moving anything right now, because also I'm just watching how that happens, and I still don't totally know how that happens. But I do want to just bring it to the attention of council, and that maybe we'd want to talk about it, unless there's not an appetite whatsoever, which is that, like, your team probably really knows great things about this that I don't know about solar panels, but just because it is in the context of, like, the 80% reduction and appetite for, like, climate action within the strategic planning process, I'm just curious if other people in council would want that to be a non-routine or to keep it as routine, and I'm not set either way. I just kind of wanted to bring it up. So thank you.
Is that 293?
Yes, that was in the context of our roofing project, so that is correct.
And, sorry, I should add, and one of the reasons I wanted to bring it up also is this, like, conversation around public-private partnerships, and what do we want private sector to do, and what do we want public sector to, a strong public sector to do. So that's also the reason why I brought it up.
Yes, councillor, that is part of the analysis that we're looking at.
So again, if there's a desire for 293 to move, we can flag that and deal with it when we get to a motion on these. If that sparks another conversation to see what is and isn't feasible with the dollars at the time of release, that would seem prudent. And I commented at a higher level, one of the vehicles that we have to deal with those kinds of, you know, solar array opportunities is Grand River Energy, which is the holding companies from, on the hydro side for all of the lower-tier municipalities in the region. And solar PV is one of those items that they are working in, and so there are partnerships with agents that we sort of own, and if there's a return that comes off of that, and there's expertise out there that isn't in here, I mean, there's partnership opportunities for us to give consideration to, subject to budget and timing and everybody's priorities. So, okay. That can be flagged, and we can come there. I have Councilor Bonnagar, then Councilor Bodley.
Through you, Councilor Henry. I just have a few questions. One is regarding the splash pads and our plans for rollout. Jeff, this might be a question for you. Does, I mean, I know it's not a city property, but does the splash pad at the boardwalk factor into the planning for the rollout? Or, when we look, you know, I know we've listed the West Side Splash Pad as the first one to be built for the city, but should we be just kind of reassessing our rollout schedule, given that it may not be the cities, but there is a splash pad, like, somewhere in the vicinity?
Through you, Chair Henry, to the councillor. The Parkland Strategy, which I spoke about a couple of weeks ago or last week, it's going to be coming out very shortly, and we're going to be finalizing that document in this year ideally. The strategy will speak directly to splash pads and where we put them, how we design them, what they should be, how, like, different themes and that type of detail. So that will be in there for sure. The one at the boardwalk, yeah, actually, isn't in the city of Waterloo. It's actually, I believe, the city of Kitchener, very, very close. However, you are correct, the community does use that, and it is open to the public, the general public. So that would be taken into consideration as we plan and move forward on how we place our splash pads. And certainly, if I can put a little plug in, for me to advance for splash pads would be quite an onerous task and likely take some additional staff resources and some time. So certainly, where the one is at the boardwalk would play into our strategy.
I'd observe, I think, given the boundary between the cities is a feature in that general courtyard, that if the splash pad isn't technically in Waterloo, water from it no doubt splashes into Waterloo from all of that. That border is only known because they've actually put the line in the ground, and you can step in both municipalities at the same time, and if, I'm sure if you're five or you're 50, it's a great thing to do. Further comments?
Yes, and this is regarding budget item 219. Again, it's me just learning the processes here. It's the funding that's set aside for the West Side Recreation Facility land acquisition. I'm just curious, process-wise, why is that listed for this year's, for the 2019 budget, when the plan itself is a few years down the track?
Yes, through you, Councilor Henry, to Councilor Bonnagar. We are looking at opportunities, so we need to secure the land first, and that's the priority sequence to ensure we have a place before we start planning.
It's like the contingency fund, so we can move when we need to, in a way.
Correct.
Okay. And final question is more of a clarification with the fire service vehicles. I was in touch with Chief Peppich, and there's two lines, 308 and 309, looking at the replacement of the deputy chief's vehicles. And vehicle two, the paperwork's had it listed as being needed in replacement in 2022, but, Chief, you said that's not correct, so it's needed for this coming year, is that correct?
Correct. So through you, Chair Henry, to Councilor Bonnagar, thank you for pointing that out. I have been in touch with our financial analyst. There is an error in the description for car two. That vehicle is in fact set for replacement in 2019, where in which case the vehicle for car three that states it's set for replacement in 2021 is correct in the narrative, but not in the section that talks about the funding source and the amount.
Okay. So does that mean for then, for car three, that's line 309, so that funding would not be required in 2019? That would be for the upcoming budget?
Correct, in 2021, which will be discussed there. So I will follow up with greater detail and clarity where required through our financial analyst on that item.
Okay.
Both items, actually. Thank you.
Okay, then I have Councilor Bodley, and I'm noting 309, that if it's not actually due in 2019, we'll have some work to do on that to make sure we don't approve it for 2019. Councilor Bodley?
Through you, Chair Henry. So Councilor Bonnagar brought up the point that I was going to make about the splash pad, notwithstanding the fact that residents in the West Side definitely would appreciate a city-run splash pad for sure, and it's something that I hear from neighborhood associations quite frequently, but they are happy with the boardwalk splash pad as well. So I definitely think that should be part of the conversation for sure, particularly when we're considering the location of the splash pad. But I'll leave that be for now. My other question is around 206, and understanding that this is non-routine, so it's coming back, but I'm just, I'm just curious, and perhaps this is just not being aware, and I'm hoping you can give me some feedback on it. How does this compare to our Engage Waterloo platform? How does this compare to other public engagement or engagement initiatives that we have in the city? Just curious whether there's any overlap there and what the goal of it is.
So through Chair Henry to Councilor Bodley, the Engage Waterloo is a platform portal that, where we receive information from the public. This initiative is really around those open houses that we foster, that we facilitate, where we engage the public in a, perhaps, council chamber at its broadest setting. If we get down into a rec complex, in a big, you know, house or house discussion, and then down to maybe stakeholder meetings in a smaller committee room where we're asking for input advice on a specific initiative. So it's taking staff through, how do they best facilitate a discussion? How do they make sure everybody's included in the process? How do they deal with those challenging conversations where there's a bit of dichotomy in the room on an issue, and how do they build that community building that we are trying to foster in so many ways? So it's a training piece, and then from there in the future, looking at ways, perhaps a project, if we're engaging a specific group, can be used to fund maybe some implementation in there as well.
I think sort of the item Mr. Bowman was commenting on last week on the IAP2 or 2P, I always get the order of those two wrong, and participatory budgeting, and where do we go from it?
Yes, IAP2, correct.
Yeah, IAP2. And I used to work at University of Waterloo, where it's ITMS and IMTS, it was different just by those two letters, and that throws me off to this day, when we've got the acronyms to the same thing that we do in a different order. Okay, thank you, Councilor Bodley. I think it would be, so are there any other questions? Councilor Ruth, right. Thank you.
Through you, Chair Henry, and thank you, Chair Henry, for doing a great job today so far on stick handling all this.
My notes are getting more jumbled, so save your praise until we finish.
You're doing great, thank you. Just a question about line 204, which is routine, which is accessibility facility upgrades, AODA requirements. Could somebody just explain, does that, is that, do we have those projects all set out, or is that just as things come up? Or just a little more clarification, please, Mr. Bowman?
Through you, Councilor Henry. We have a list of a number of initiatives that in place that have been brought to our attention for upgrades, whether it be signage, accessibility, and so forth. And so those dollars are set aside to put those projects in place as a priority comes up. So if there's some facilities that might be grandfathered in, we might be able to put them forward very quickly. But we look at what's out there right now. So currently, we had a conversation about an opportunity for a lift in the pool, and we approved it, but unfortunately, it was not able to be done based on the structure of our pool and some other issues at hand. So we do have a list. We go to that list to determine which are a priority for us.
Okay, thank you. I also want to go back to the splash pad conversation. At lines 229 to 231, and just hoping that, or reiterating that ward three needs a splash pad in a bad way. I'm not sure whether, now that I look at this, I know where the east is, and I don't know whether my ward is considered north or west. But, and I, and then the other part of that is, it's not, it's not under 2019, so backing up with, backing up Councilor Freeman's comments about moving those forward, a priority for our community overall. That might be it for now.
If I can, if I could just comment on those, through the chair, to Councilor Heath. Definitely some conversations we've had with the director in the area, Jeff Silcox Childs, to see if we can get a combined design program going there. We'll, two pieces to that, it's the cash flow, and we can look at that with finance in the next week to make sure that's good. Advancing some design would be needed for the 2019. Resources would be the other piece, the actual project managers. We have, through that 2019 budget in the landscape architect area, a number of folks assigned already, so we have to take a little look at that. We may need to come back with whether a project needs to be pushed out or that needs to be part of the discussion. But we're open to having the facilitated design. We see an option or a benefit of the underground being scoped and specked out. We want to then recognize that we could get some standardization there, but then going to some uniqueness with each community, so it's some variables with the above-ground elements. We see that as a great way to go, and we could piece meal that. An approach with maybe a project sort of design-build piece, we're open to exploring that and seeing if that could give us the design influence, but also the contracting influence to give us some economies of scale and achieve what we're hearing from council. So there's some options there that we're going to take away in the next week, and we can report a little further on.
So just, could that, so for the action park that's coming to Ward Three, could that be integrated into kind of a, kind of, like, into that project as well as part of that? Or, just an idea, I don't know, maybe that would make things more...
We appreciate the feedback. We, as a project team, we've connected last week and subsequent to council meeting last week, and we said, well, how can we integrate some of Ward Three needs and wish to have further discussion with some key community stakeholders to see where we could get some synergies there. Taking it at a broader macro level around splash pad needs than trying to understand if there's options at other park spaces across the wards to see where it's the best fit for a splash pad, leveraging then things that are amenities that are currently at facilities, whether it is the washrooms, whether it is other staff, meeting rooms, to see if those are the right mix. So some work is needed there, but some starting points would be some community consultation.
Okay, so any other questions on community services items? I will get a conversation going on this particular item soon. Mayor Jaworski?
Well, I was just going to suggest that on this, on this particular item, with respect to, what we're really talking here is about Albert McCormick Arena and the area there. So there's lots of needs, certainly in that area, the library, lots of needs in that area. So instead of taking a holistic approach, looking at splash pads across the geography, maybe that location has an area of various needs that might need to be prioritized.
So, but nothing else on any? So are there, are there any questions folks have on any other items in the community services area? The conversation we've had around both action sports and around splash pads are non-routine items. So are there any routine items that are listed, aside from item 293, which Councilor Vasek raised, which council would like to not be classified as routine in the 219 capital budget? Seeing... That's like a removal and a change, so I'm going to do that separately. That's a, like a removal and a change, so I'm going to do that separately um to try to keep it clean for staff. So the first motion I would propose uh that somebody move is nine through fourteen as printed uh in the agenda, with the note that um under 11 uh that except for reference 293, uh which is the one that Counselor Vasik identified should be non-routine. That was the facility design management, solar panels, fix the stuff.
Um I'm not, I, I was just curious if other people wanted it to also be non-routine, and I'm, I, like I said, I'm not tied to it. I mostly just wanted a conversation. I don't want to put it as, as non-routine if the rest of council doesn't want it as non-routine, but I just think it's a point of discussion. Is that, is that right?
So I'll look to Commissioner Dykstra first.
Uh yes, uh thank you Chair Henry and to all the council. Just on 293, that's really around, just to be clear, it's really around the actual uh the membrane replacement and the actual need to make sure we have a solid roof of uh around us. We're looking at options separately from the specific line item to deal with solar, and that's where we will be uh back to council on any recommendations related to that solar piece and where we're going with that. So uh for the sake of uh enabling the work to get done, to make sure we don't have buckets throughout the facilities, I recommend that it stay as routine as noted here to help uh enable the team to uh get on with the uh the work at hand.
I think that's helpful. That's, that's why I was trying to confirm that the item we were talking about was really 293 earlier, and when the answer was yes, I wrote it down. It didn't feel like yes, but I heard yes. Uh so we're, we'll draw that, we'll keep it as routine, yes? Because the solar panel issue is a separate line item that's already coming back. Sundar, did you have further comments on this?
Thank you very much, uh Chair Henry. The, the council green, green building policy is going to come this year, the procedure, and we have a study to assess what things that we have to do for each buildings under green building policies. So there will be a series of projects that we are planning to bring in for the next three year budget plan, and that will dictate what kind of initiative that we are going to take to reduce greenhouse gas energy, or greenhouse gas and energy. And one of the projects or one of the themes would be solar panel insulation, and at that time, that can be classified as a special one. Thanks.
Okay, so it sounds like we're good. I think for clarity of the fact that there's a deputy chief's vehicle we don't need under 12, we should say except 309 there because we don't want to approve it as routine and then have a separate motion. And I can deal with the separate motion in a second. That makes sense, Madam Clerk? Okay, so that takes us from nine to fourteen with the, you know, except reference 309 for the car that's in the wrong place. I'll look for someone to move that, Counselor Bonagor, someone to second that, Counselor Freeman, any discussion on those routine items? Seeing none, all those in favor to confirm? Thank you. Uh and now I think it's appropriate for, let, let's get rid of 309 in the first place. Let's uh have a motion um that that uh 309 be moved to 2021? Since that's what we heard. Counselor Bonagor who found it, Counselor Hanmer who loves cars being bought when, only when they're supposed to be. Uh if staff are fine with that, uh then I'll take that vote. All those in favor? Uh that's carried. Car is bought in the right year, uh correct? Uh and now we can get on to uh items we might like more information on. Or to, to move up to uh a series of things, first to 2019. Counselor Freeman, could you uh, let's start with the splash pad piece. Could we, could we start with what you're asking for, and we'll see if we can craft stuff, because I've got some suggestions from finance staff, but I just want to let you lead in because this was, you started it off.
And is it as simple as just to say staff consider, direct staff to consider ways to um advance the splash pads in 2020 through the capital planning?
So I, I think it's, it's 2020, 2021, 2022. What I was hearing from finance staff through various emails that I'll let uh Felipe comment on if I get them wrong, uh is that we could uh direct staff to investigate uh, you know, allocating design money for these in 2019, uh and construction monies uh in the, in the three-year budget, uh and report back next week since we need to confirm those design monies. Does that make sense to? Various staffs, does that make sense to Counselor Freeman?
Yeah, like, I mean, basically what we've heard around the table so far is on the West, um uh Counselor Bodley said that there is the iron needles opportunity. In the North, there's nothing. Like, I don't know whether you consider North me or North Angela, but it's, it's really, and then, um and then the East, I think, is Jen and I. At least I would see it that way. And, and the other thing is too, is I guess I want to empower staff to look at, at what's happening and say, is there ways to think about doing these things together? So I don't know, like do the grading with the action sports park and the whole kit and caboodle in one? I don't know. And so just like, you know, think outside the box, I guess, and, and also look at how we're balancing our expenditures on, on parks and where, where the users are.
So, well, I mean, what I've, what I've, what I've heard is that there's some agreement with moving Counselor Freeman's, I can buy Counselor Vith on the suggestion around uh staff, you know, considering if we could advance design, money for design in 2019 uh for, for construction during the three-year budget. I don't want to pin down priorities uh in order because I think the park strategy will deal with that. But that's the language I heard from finance staff, um separately from both Ms. Patel and uh and Ms. Reynolds, and different emails they didn't copy each other on. But they had the same idea, that's good. And moved and seconded, I see Counselor Bodley with the question on that.
I, I just, sorry, through you Chair Henry, I did, I just want to clarify, yes, that the boardwalk splash pad is uh an option for people in the West End, but the West End is a very big place all the way up to Conservation Drive. And so I don't think it should be considered that that is our splash pad on the West End. And uh so I want to take that sort of off the table. I, but I do appreciate the, the, trying to understand what west versus east versus north means uh within, within the context of where a splash pad is going to go, and perhaps that will get more crystallized as we uh, as we go through the anti splash pad in my ward.
That's, that's probably very important for the residents of Ward 2. What I heard uh Mr. Silkox Childs nod to was, yes, the park strategy will help us detail location uh and priority, which is my question as well. Uh I, I think it's indicative when you look at the capital project sheet, that it's our logo and not uh, and not a map with a box around it, uh telling us where. Uh and, and so I, I've certainly been cautious about trying to advance things when we've just got our logo to build on rather than an actual location. So uh so I think this, this timing could uh, could help, and staff can report back next week. Did you have?
Oh, I was just going to put a plug in for the South. Same thing. Same deal, the, the populations are changing and younger families coming again, but I do really like the idea that we're looking at the feasibility, and I believe the parkland strategy will show us where it needs to go, and we really need to look that out rather than the listing here, so that's all.
And I think what we're going to find, not just in this budget, but in the next one through the park strategy, is we have far more needs than we will ever have dollars. Uh and, and there are equitable distributions, we're going to have to figure out how to ma- how to, how to match. And uh there are some principles, I'm sure, that will be uh at the top line of the park strategy that will help guide us so we don't get into any parochial, you know, area, but we've got some guideposts that can help us uh prioritize limited, limited dollars. And since everybody else is chiming in on general locations, I would continue to note that the east side of my ward has zero uh city-owned park spaces, other than those we recently purchased in Northdale as small parkettes and Veterans Green, which you don't really want people overly parking, uh doing parking things in, given the commemorative nature of that. And it is a massively growing, booming area, uh and, and it's never had, never had a single park space, let alone one that could be enhanced with more facilities. Everyone else was saying it, I need to say that too. You have park spaces in Ward 5. So, so I think we're, we're, we're good on, on those pieces. We've got a motion that staff helped craft, and uh, and I'm looking at that moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that splash pad piece? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. Uh were there other items?
So the action sports park is the second one, right? So um again, um I, I'd like to encourage staff to look at ways to move that um up in the capital budget. The two locations identified, so Rim Park and uh Albert McCormick. And um and, and one of the, like, I see that as kind of being, splitting the city in half, right? Like with those two locations. But on that one, like, I, I really hope staff can do a deep dive into DCs in some of those areas rather than looking at them being tax-supported. Because um the, I, I, I think there has been some development in those wards where we may or may not have allocated the DCs. So I'm thinking like the BlackBerry lands in my area, there's some new lands that were sold that are going to be coming online. And on, in Angela's Ward, like, I don't know where the DCs went for the Kumpf Drive developments that were all approved in 2010. And so I don't really know, but I'm just saying, can we, can we look into that and, and see what might be available on that front?
So I, I note between 220 and 221, about a quarter of it is, is DC funded now. I'm sure that was done through a, a council-approved DC bylaw as referencing growth and split. I see Mr. Rapp with his hand up, so I'll stop talking and give it to Mr. Rapp.
Thank you Chair Henry. Just for clarification, I think uh Counselor Freeman, what you might be referring to is the cash in lieu of parkland that might have been collected in those areas instead of the development charges. But certainly we can work with finance and then work with the community services to determine what cash in lieu has been collected in Counselor Vith's ward as well as your ward to see funding allocations related to parkland in those areas.
And I think that certainly in dovetailing with the park strategy, um parkland dedication funds that are generated from developers not providing parks in development is going to be, is always an important funding component of uh park expansion opportunities. DCs for actually putting the stuff on the land, um but uh, but parkland dedication for getting the land uh in the, in those cases. And so I'm sure when the parkland strategy comes back, that the report Mr. Rapp is speaking of, of collections, uh if we can sequence those at the same time, uh those would be helpful for uh, for council, just again, overview of where the money's coming from and where it's gone uh on, on some of those. So uh I think what I'm hearing from Counselor Freeman, uh and I'd extrapolate this, there's uh, there's been sort of up to three locations, from what I understand, considered under action sports, uh in terms of Harper, in terms of McCormick, and in terms of uh, in terms of Rim Park, there's dollars here to do at least one of those and to start those other pieces. But we need to advance additional dollars. What I've also heard from responses to questions is that the, the park strategy will help guide us on, on those, and those will help deal with dollars. But council signaling that these, that advancing those other two um inside uh the, the three year uh capital budget, uh subject to strategic plan, uh is, is something that Counselor Freeman would like to direct staff to look at, uh and that Counselor Vith would probably second directing staff to look at. Have I got that right? Clerks and finance know what I've said, and that sounds motionable. There's things to look at, okay? Any comments about uh, about those items? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. And I expect that Counselor Vith probably would like to talk about item 284. Do you have a motion that sounds very similar?
Yes, um the Button Factory elevator that needs to be moved up into the next uh three years. So um direct staff to, work to uh find some dollars to make that happen, please.
Similar phrasing around priority, three-year capital, subject to yada, yada, yada.
There, there must be some, some help out there, you know, with, with grants and that kind of thing. This is an AODA accessibility uh issue right here that I, you know, it, it's a, it's a prior, it should be a priority for this, for a city building um that's highly used. And uh I think we need to move that forward into the next three years. Thank you.
So I assume that's moved by Counselor Vith and seconded by Counselor Vasik? You like, you like art stuff? Uh it could be by Counselor Bonagor, since he's in the uptown, but I don't know, I'm just throwing some stuff here. Uh Commissioner Dykstra, is that, I was just looking this, to the side of the chambers. Feasible for uh, for your department?
Through the Chair to Counselor Vith and the rest of council. Yes, we've put the wheels in motion to look how we can uh advance some design for uh 2019, that'll inform us for the 2020 budget to recognize we need uh to pull that forward in the three-year based on all the strategic priorities as well. So we're, we've started and we will continue to uh advance and communicate to council on that specific item.
Commissioner, do you uh require uh funding to be uh identified in 2019 for that work? Or is funding being identified uh out of various of your existing lines that are proposed and you're working through those?
To the Chair, yes, we've identified existing working lines, and we don't need a specific direction from council now. If we need to come back per policy or other, any other mechanism, we'll do so once we explore a little further.
Yeah, so it sounds like I don't need to amend the motion on the table to use the words 2019 in any capacity, because you're already doing that with money you have without us, so that's good. So moved and seconded, comments on that item? Counselor Bodley?
Yeah, sorry, through you Chair Henry. And perhaps I'm misremembering here, but can I just get some clarity about the entire funding amount that's here, 1.25 million dollars uh in 2028? Is that entirely associated with the elevator? Or is there other elements uh associated therein that perhaps should be separated to advance the elevator? To prioritize that over other elements that are within that budget number?
Yeah, through uh?
Good question.
Chair Henry to Counselor Bodley. Uh yes, there are other elements in there that was a, a full AODA package that the staff team was looking at and was uh referencing in that item. So yes, they will pull and separate and have a review of that to make sure uh the elements are uh properly uh examined and proportionately, proportionately uh budgeted for.
Sorry, through you Chair Henry. And uh do we have an idea of uh what the cost of the elevator on its own is going to be, even a rough amount at this point in time?
We believe it is, is going to be under 400 and 400, 450,000, but um we, that's our estimate or the opinion, and um we will, we are going to have that estimate um this year, this year.
And I, and I guess I would just ask uh Counselor Vith whether the, the elevator specifically is the, is the top priority in, in here versus the other elements of the discussion?
For the Button Factory, absolutely. They're, they're losing uh rental and tenants because people just can't get to the upstairs. And it's beautiful, amazing space, there's a grand piano up there. And this is, they're on pins and needles, the folks that, that work there, because they just, they don't know how long they'll be able to be there. And I think it's high time that we uh, we spent some money on this.
So is it fair for the wording of the motion, then, to be the, the elevator component of reference 284? That would be consistent with what Commissioner Dykstra has said and what Counselor Bodley has confirmed. Excellent. So, so amended? Uh or, or adjusted? Uh any further conversation on uh getting uh people with mobility concerns up to the second floor of the Button Factory at some point in the next many years? Seeing none, all those in favor that direction? That's carried. I think that means we are done for community services. Thank you, Commissioner Dykstra.
Thank you, Council.
And last but not least, and certainly not least in terms of dollar value, Commissioner Rapp, IPW. I'm seeing a couple of people who have taken a break, so shall we take a two-minute break? That will probably be five? So done. That's okay.